Recording in progress.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to City Griffin Board of Commissioners. Where's my mic? Board of Commissioners, February twenty five, twenty twenty five workshop. First item for discussion is the updates to telecommunications, internet and phone rates. Chief Technology Officer, Gib Cotton, will address. And the crowd roars, woo! Good morning, sir.
Good morning, how are you doing?
Wonderful.
You don't hear me?
All right. I do have to make a confession. I have Griffin Fiber at my office, and it is amazing.
It's lovely, isn't it?
What's that?
I said it's lovely, isn't it?
It is lovely, so, thank you.
So, we've got a new rate update coming along. Not working. You want to just click the button? Yeah. All right. Next slide when you're ready, Mike. So, there's a couple of drivers for the rate update. The first one is the new technology that we're implementing. We're going to a ten gigabit system, which is XGS-PON. In layman's terms, that's just a much, much faster system. But with that system is a new licensing model from the vendor. So, that's kind of driving some of these changes that we're seeing, not just for us, but also the industry as a whole. New features come along with that, like an app that the user can use in the home. So, you know, you can control parental control features for your children. Say, you know, you want your children to only have access to the internet before nine P M. at night. So, there's a lot of technology changes that are coming along, and we need to, you know, update our rates accordingly to stay in line with that. The next driver is changes in voice-over IP technology. So, your phone, the licensing model for that is changing as well. We need to make sure we're compliant with the FCC. We didn't see a, we didn't really hit the nail on the head on our first go-round when we introduced our rates. So, we kind of left ourselves open to complications on the billing side and making sure that we're compliant with our four ninety-nine Qs and other compliances that we have to file back with the feds. And that kind of feeds into the regulatory recommendations from our vendor. They, they made, they made a overall statement that we need to make some of these changes to make it easier for us and also, so it just, you know, looks better on paper and more compliant. Next slide? Can we try it again? Ah, it does work. Thank you, Mike. So, before we get started on the rates themselves, I'd like to highlight two key differences between telecom rates and other rates that you guys are used to. This is not like some of the water and power rates that you see when we implement a new rate. Our old rates are still in place for our users. They are grandfathered in on that old rate. So, if they were paying a hundred dollars a month for service, when we implement this new rate, they don't get the new rate unless they ask for it. Now, in our case, most of our rates will be less expensive. So, there's a good possibility that they're going to come to us and say, hey, we want to switch to your new rate, which kind of feeds back into getting off of the old platform and moving to this new system. It, it kind of incentivizes old users to, to move over to this new system. It's faster, it's better, and in a lot of cases, it's going to be less expensive overall for the, for the end customer. Next slide, Mike? This is our residential internet analysis. There is an asterix next to AT&T. I'm sure as everybody's aware, it's very difficult to figure out what the drive-out cost on service with AT&T is. We, we've tried to do an apples-to-apples comparison, but there are, I think, six or seven different sub-charges that kind of go into determining what the actual monthly charge is, ranging from, you know, auto pay to, you know, credit rating and other things. So, and also the market that you're actually in. So, we, we try to do our best and make a direct comparison. As you can see, like, the first column here, like, this is our current rates. This one hundred meg rate, that's our lowest tier. This is the only rate for internet that we're going up on, and we're going up by ten dollars. All the other rates for residential and for business, they're all going down. Our five hundred meg rate, we're getting rid of that. We just don't see it in the market anymore. Instead, we're going to a more simplified one gig and two gig rates, which is kind of the, the industry standard. We are neck and neck with Conexon and for service on both of those rates. And we're considerably lower than AT&T for our two gig rate and a little bit lower on our one gig rate. Again, it's, it's hard to make an apples-to-apples comparison with AT&T because of how they have their rates structured.
Can you explain the phone parts?
Yeah, so, a phone, pots stands for plain old telephone service. So, just like the phone you had in your kitchen growing up, that's a pots line. It can be a fax machine. It can be, you know, analog, like the phone that you have in your kitchen and, you know, call your friends on. But that just stands for plain old telephone service, and that includes unlimited long distance to the lower forty-eight states. So, that's thirty-five dollars per month. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll wait till on the business side.
Yep, yep. Business side, same. We do not change the, the rate for phone service for business.
So, that's an alternative, I think, about like UMA or something?
That sounds like a vendor, yeah. It would be an alternative to UMA or Vonage or any other service like that.
And so, the current fiber that we have run to a business could go to that phone?
Yep, yep. It, it can do a normal telephone, both residential and business. You can also have like an advanced phone system like what we have here. The City of Griffin has the same phone system that we offer to businesses.
Thank you.
All right. And on to the business side. Again, overall, we're decreasing our rates. We're going down slightly on our hundred meg rate for our, our low tier. When you add in Wi-Fi, that'll put us right with Conexon. AT&T does not have a hundred meg rate. They start at three hundred, and they're seventy dollars. So, we are a little bit under their lowest tier in terms of cost, but not in speed. So, that's kind of a, it's kind of a wash. But again, with AT&T, it is kind of difficult to figure out exactly what their monthly charge is. We're doing away with our five hundred meg rate, just like on our residential side. And our one gig rate at two hundred fifty dollars is getting cut almost in half. We're dropping it back to a hundred forty-five dollars just to be more competitive with Conexon and AT&T. Same thing with our two gig. We did not have a two gig rate because the old system couldn't support it. But it is, you know, in line with AT&T. Again, it's, it's slightly cheaper than AT&T. Phone system, phone line, pots and long distance, same as our residential rates, thirty-five dollars a month. Any questions on that so far, y'all?
Where, where in City of Griffin are we offering a residential service?
I have a map. I don't think I have it on any slides, but I can get it to you. It's from central Griffin, so in the downtown area, east all the way to, I'm sorry, west. Excuse me, west, all the way to Home Depot and Southern Crescent. So, kind of that triangle from Experiment Street down to Taylor Street. There's a big swath there in the, the west that we're servicing. Our next area that we're lighting up is going up north, up North Hill Street, Quilly Street, and what's, what's that street on the north side of the railroad tracks?
East Broadway.
East Broadway, yeah, and East Broadway past the old mill.
So, nothing in the, uh, uh, west Griffin, north of, um, of, um, the railroad track?
Not yet, but that theater that we're building up north, it's staging us to, to branch out from there because there's some, I think there's some growth opportunities there at the, the, uh, the, uh, some of the rehab, rehab, I guess. What's the, what was the building that was? Thomson, Thomson Mills. I'm, I'm thinking next to A.C., A.C. Kelsey. There was a, isn't there a development going in there? Rosenwald. So, we're kind of prepping to, to expand out into northwest Griffin, right there.
Do we market going to, like, the developers that are doing Thomson Mill, the new apartment complex at the hospital, letting them know?
We have just started doing that, and that's actually in, in here too.
Got you. Thank you.
The last one, which is probably the, the hardest to talk about because it's such a specialized product. You know, you're dealing with large customers that could be, you know, life and death situations or, or their, their whole business model relies on, on having access to reliable access to the internet, whether it's, you know, Hosshizaki and some of the engineering drawings that they have going back and forth between their plants here and in Peachtree City or the hospital itself. You know, you have these enterprise customers that need fast, reliable internet. So, that's where our inter-rate, enterprise rates come into play. We market this towards any business that has more than ten full-time employees with computers issued to them or for anybody that asks for it. Again, this has twenty-four-hour support, twenty-four-by-seven proactive monitoring of all the equipment. I like to say that, you know, we, they don't call us, we call them, saying that their circuit's down. And, you know, the pricing is a little bit more expensive than our, our, our business rates, you know, to.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know over in the area I'm asking you about, AT&T has said that they didn't have a, um, a marketing audience to support putting the faster internet or, and stuff over there. Is that the same thing that the city is saying? There's not enough people using the service to support them or justify them putting the service in that area?
Hmm, no. I mean, our, our plan is to service, service that area. I just don't think we have the money right now to, to get there. But that is our, our next launching area. Are you talking about, what, what's, what's specific area you're talking about? Are you talking about northwest?
Uh-huh. The area from Thomson Mill, like, from North Hill Street, across the track, North Hill Street West, back over, off of Ninth Street, uh, back toward Bale Street, Palace Street, Turner Street, the area up by Rising Star Church, all of that area.
Yeah. The, what we're building right now is a trunk or like a main line that, that goes up the North Hill Street corridor. That's going to stage us or give us the ability to branch off of it and serve that area. So, it, it is our intention to serve that area. We just don't have any engineering done for it yet.
But, uh, how important is it going to be for people to have the service? Because the majority of the people over there use, uh, use, um, cell phones.
Yeah.
Most people don't have landline or, um, uh, use, uh, at-home, probably at-home computers and stuff. They just use cell phones. So, like I said, AT&T is saying that, you know, they don't have a, a marketing audience enough to support putting the faster internet or whatever over there. And I'm, I just, I just don't want to make sure that that areas are left out again because, um, we, we probably won't have that many people, as many people as other areas might use, using the service.
Yeah. It's not my intent to do that, no. I, I, I wouldn't be where I'm at today in my career if my parents didn't believe in me and have internet and all of the, the things that it brings along with it. You know, a lot of people think internet, it's video games, it's Netflix. For me, it wasn't. It was learning how to program. It was learning how to do this. Like, you can go on the internet and you can learn Python and become the next Mark Zuckerberg. That's the opportunity that I want to give to every citizen in Griffin. Now, I don't know if that aligns with.
An estimation, a guesstimation, how long do you think, how far out is it that, that we might be able to service the area?
That's a tough question. I, I, I don't, if, if it's a priority, we'll make it a priority. So. Well, I'll get back to you with some engineering.
I guess, probably need to develop a plan.
Yeah.
That shows where we're at, where we're going, our density in terms of the, the impact we're having where we've already expanded.
Yeah.
And a financial blueprint to say, hey, it's going to cost a quarter million dollars to impact this zone. And do we need to, if we see the, reap the benefit of, to borrow the money?
Yeah.
Bond the project to get it done quicker, maybe, and then?
Yeah. I, I wasn't aware that, that AT&T wasn't servicing that area with their new fiber. I'd seen, we've seen construction, but they just, they're just.
But I've got, you know, like, the area off of Maddox Road, we've got a group of folks at, not Maddox, but what, um, yeah, Maddox Road. They want the city internet service and all that stuff. So, I think the demand's there if we show them a value.
Yeah.
For return, and how do we?
No, it's, it's good questions. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Any questions on enterprise? Uh, we have some other charges. These are kind of secondary charges. We want to keep, particularly for our residents, when we have a no-install charge wherever possible. So, if there is an existing pathway into a structure, and, and it could just be a, an eve that is easy to access or crawl space that's easy to access, then we will not charge an install fee to install our service to their, to their house. Same thing with, uh, businesses. We're not going to charge one if there is an existing pathway. Now, if there's non-existing pathway, we will have to do an install charge of a hundred dollars for residential and two hundred dollars for business. These bottom features, these really don't apply to most residential, but they, they could in some certain situations. A central panel install, that would be a central wiring panel for, let's say, a large business that's buying our, our phone system. If their cabling system inside the building is not up to, enough to support our, our phone system, then we'd have to install cabling in a central panel. It, it's not a, this is not something that we want to get into. It's not a, we, we would encourage the businesses to take on this endeavor themselves, and the pricing reflects that. It is pretty overpriced for what it is. But in situations where, uh, small jobs where the business just wants a turnkey, you know, two or three phones, we do have that in our repertoire that we can take care of.
In regards to install, if somebody wants, like, City of Griffin, there's a rate per foot to install underground power. Do you have that rate developed where someone wants?
We do, uh, we're doing a flat fee because it's, for us, the, there's not a lot of cost in the fiber itself. A lot of the cost is in the install fee and actually inside the, the structure. So, once we get fiber to the structure, it's, it's actually getting it where it needs to be inside of the structure, where, where most of our costs reside.
The fee to under, uh, I'm trying to find, see the fee to run from the street to the house, underground burial, what's the cost?
Yeah, that's, that's included in, in our original engineering when we built everything. This fee would just be to connect it from that point on the outside of their, their building or their house. So, the D mark to somewhere inside of the, the building. So, when we did our pricing and, and, uh, pricing models, everything was based on the assumption that we already had fiber to the structure itself. This fee is just from the outside of the structure inside to, you know, the closet or to the bedroom or wherever.
So, from the utility pole on the right way of the street to the house underground, there is no charge?
No, they're, they're not a charge to the customer. That's baked into our, when we did our pricing models and our viability.
Say, I need to replace my underground Comcast line with a City of Griffin underground, once the service gets brought to that area. That fee would be to go underground?
Yeah, that, that, we, 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 we eat that. That's included in the, the cost of service for us.
Okay.
It's just, once it's to the building, getting it inside to where, where it needs to go.
Okay.
Gib, are these charges, um, current now? Are these changes or proposed, or is this where we are now?
Yeah, we, we currently don't have a charge. The only mechanism we have to charge is, is to our business customers, and then we can write in on the remarks that there was a, you know, a three hundred dollar install fee to install from this point to this point. This really just kind of formalizes our, makes it easier for the customer and, and for us too. Because, you know, you don't want to charge, you know, person on this side of the building one charge and the person on this side of the building another charge. It, you kind of need to standardize that. All good questions. Thank you. Customer-side call-out charge. So, we pride ourselves in customer service. We want to be able to, you know, if the customer's having a problem, we can go out there, take care of it. But we have had a couple of instances where we've discovered that the issue was not with our system. It was with something on the user's network or something with the application that we're using. And we had multiple call-outs, you know, under the auspice that it was a problem with our service. This is charged in the way that it's worded, is kind of a backstop against that. So, if we run into a situation like that where we suspect that this isn't a problem with our service, this is actually a problem with, with your provider, with your application or, or some camera that you've bought on Amazon, this is not, this is not a Griffin Fiber problem. This gives us a backstop to say, there is a charge if we come out and look at this again. Equipment charge or equipment damage, that's just a replacement cost of the device plus, um, plus the charge or call-out charge. We've had a couple of instances. Water damage was one, and then a dog, a dog likes, there's a dog that likes to eat our fiber.
Squirrel.
Squirrel, yeah.
Squirrel.
But, you know, that just gives us a, a mechanism to, you know, charge that back to the customer. And, uh, static IP, fifteen dollars a month. We were charging ten dollars a month for that. We're bumping it up a little bit because static IPs, IP version four, there's a limited number of them, and the pool is running out.
What is that? What is static IP?
A static IP, an IP address is a unique number assigned to any, uh, device on the internet, and it's used for communications. It identifies your device on the internet. A static IP says, like, this is, this is Doug's IP address. And it's needed for certain types of communication, like if you have, if you're connecting to a VPN, not from a VPN. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a thing that's needed for larger businesses. You really don't see that in smaller businesses. But we bought, I think we bought two thousand and forty-eight about three years ago, and we're about twenty percent through those. So, we need to start ratcheting up our costs because if, if we don't, then we're going to run out because people are buying them that really don't need them because they're so cheap. So, we're trying to steer people towards, you know, do you really need one? This is our hosted PBX or voice-over IP phone. This is the same phone system that Griffin uses. The pricing on it is just getting updated. It's a more simplified licensing model. Instead of feature sets being broken out individually and everything being à la carte, a lot of these fees are just rolled into singular charges per month. So, as an example, Griffin would fall into Ascend IPN Express or Ascend IPN for Teams Advanced for most of our devices. Whereas right now, it's, it's the same price, more or less. It's just, it's broken into several different charges across, like, long distance and auto attendance and other features like that. This just simplifies it and rolls it all into a singular charge. And it's the same thing that we're going to market to our, our, our customers. And the last thing I got is marketing. So, coming back to a question that Mr. Doug just asked. Yes, we have been marketing or having discussions with some of these new apartment complexes coming in. And what we've come to the conclusion with Drew's help is that there's two classes of customer that, that a apartment complex or HOA could fall into. And that would be a customer who wants to buy our services in bulk and then resell it to their, their members, HOA members or, or apartment tenants. Or a, another type would be a, what was the other agreement? The, not the bulk sales agreement, but the exclusive, yeah, excuse me, exclusive marketing agreement, which gives us the right to be the exclusive, exclusive marketer inside of an apartment. So, when somebody comes into an apartment, they can choose AT&T or us, but the apartment owners are going to give them promotional materials and steer them towards our service and say, this, everybody in the building uses this service. This is, you know, who you need to go with. So, we're exploring both options right now. We're working up contracts with Jerry Letter, Letter, Letter? Uh, he's a lawyer that Drew recommended, and he's writing up some contracts for us to review and, and hopefully get, get signed. I, I would like to bring something for approval for next board meeting because we have a lot of interest from Thomson Mills right now. They want our service for their customers or for their tenants. I think right now it's an eighty-four unit building with nine phases for expansion. Is that correct? So.
So, the city would go in and do the pre-wire to get?
Yes.
Get the wire there. So, whether it's an apartment complex or?
Yeah.
Groove that with?
Yeah, and there, there's a lot that goes into those, those agreements. There's, if it's an exclusive marketing agreement, then there's oftentimes a door fee that you pay to the, to the owner for exclusive marketing rights. You pre-wire the building, and there's a profit-sharing mechanism that goes into place after certain percentages and thresholds are met. They can be.
You might point out that it would be bulk marketing, that the complex sells the basic service to their tenant or?
Yeah.
Home bar. And that premium service is still sold by the city directly to the customer.
Yeah.
We still get the advantage of selling the premium.
So, would you be able to, like, market direct, like, DirecTV or different phone stuff through the, would they have access to?
No, we, we will never get into television.
So, they would still have to have wiring from Comcast or satellite dish from DirecTV?
Yes, but from what I'm hearing, most, particularly newer construction, they're getting away from those types of services and moving towards streaming, whether it's, you know, Hulu or, or Netflix or some other live TV service. Even AT&T's set-top boxes, they don't, they use the internet. They don't, they're IPTV. They don't use traditional DirecTV partnerships anymore.
DirecTV, you stream it?
You stream it now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm at old school, so I'm just trying to.
Yeah, like, the, what we think of as set-top boxes for TV or for, you know, cable or satellite even, that's kind of going away. Satellite still has a foothold in very rural areas where there's not internet infrastructure. But like Mr. Tinsley said, he, it's actually streaming, like, you should probably stream it on your phone or something.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, a lot of those services are, are diverging back into, or converging back into just an internet, over, over the internet.
They just have, they just need the fiber to make sure they get what they need.
Right, right, right. And that's a secondary service that I, I don't want to.
No, that's fine. I just wanted, okay. I, I was trying to think of how to get rid of the dishes. I got three left at, at one place.
So, you need to say, market two apartments and HOAs that is existing and then development, um, projects for development. We reach out and?
Yeah, and like Rosenwald would be a, a good example. And that would give us a foothold in that area that you were talking about for us to really branch out. And, and really, it is about finding anchors like, like that. And, and, you know, it, when you find an anchor like that, it's, it's, you serve everybody along the way. You know, you don't want to just go straight to that anchor. You want to hit everything you can along the way. And, uh, so bulk sales and exclusive marketing. Also, uh, long-term, we would like to simplify our, our existing MSA and roll it into the customer service contract. This is something Kelsey and I have talked about in the past. It's, it's something we wanted to do, but it was just too big to bite off at the beginning. And we, the reason for that is the customers having to sign a lot of agreements, you know. They're having to sign their service order. They're having to sign their master services agreement. They're having to come into customer service and sign their customer service contract. There's a lot of paperwork that you have to go through just to onboard a customer, and I think we lose some customers in that process. So, this will simplify it and make it easier on, on the citizen. And the last slide we have is, uh, questions.
All right, board. Who has a question?
Yeah, next, Mike? Questions? Have a lot of questions?
No question.
So, a couple, um, so in terms of the upgrade of the fiber, the, what you're talking about, so, do, do we, if fiber, Griffin Fiber's already run to a business or home, do we have to change that? Or is that fiber good to go in regards to what was installed?
The fiber itself is good. The, it's the electronics on either end that get changed.
Okay.
So, when, you know, we have an area, like, let's take your, your office, for example, this new rate comes out and you want to go to it, you pick up the phone. We do some tweaking on our end and bring you a new box, plug it in, and then it just works.
And then we could also change over to a phone service and whatever else?
Yeah, phone service, new rates, all, the whole shipment.
Okay. And then, but AT&T, Comcast have line attachment fees that pays to Griffin Power. Are we paying any attachment franchise fee or anything to?
We pay a per-attachment pole charge, um, through, I think, ECG.
So, our telecommunication is paying Griffin Power for the use of their?
Yeah.
Full pole, same way if we touch an ATT pole or Georgia Power, if we did, we would pay them?
We don't, we purposely avoid Georgia Power. AT&T, that's a different animal.
Yeah, they don't have their own pole. They don't have, they don't have the pole agreement. They're paying us.
Right.
Through our pole attachment agreement.
Right, okay.
On our poles.
Okay.
And likewise, with Georgia Power, we have a joint.
Okay. So, Griffin, Griffin Power is receiving a reward for the?
Yeah.
Opportunity. And then, um, And then, so you've answered this last one. Exciting times.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
Yeah, as far as revenue, if you look at all the sources of revenue that we right now have for the city, where will these proposed changes kind of put us, you know, like three percent, five percent? I mean, I know what you're, we're growing in and we're focusing on different areas, but overall, where do you see, like even five years from now, the revenue coming in from our broadband? I mean, you know, where, where do you see us being able to, I guess, expand our revenues into this?
In the next five years?
Yeah.
Our projections are showing about four million at current investment levels.
Wow.
So, but a lot of that has to do with like actually being able to market. Right, right now, we don't have a in-house salesperson and that's something we would like to change down the road, but initially, we, we have a partner that we would like to, or we would have a contractor that we'd like to partner with for outside sales to try to help us get some of these customers. Right now, everything we've sold has been word of mouth. And we've been pretty successful just word of mouth. So I think that this would really help us in our next, you know, putting out marketing materials with help of Danielle and some of the cool things she's doing on Facebook, having a marketing person on contract to help us do these direct sales. That's really going to push us over the top. If that all works, I think that figure that I just referenced is achievable.
Is the demand come driving it and?
Yeah, yeah. A lot of, a lot of folks, like they just want reliable internet. They're, they're burned or soured on AT&T or Comcast of, you know, not fixing their problem or, or, I guess in Ms. Moore's case, they just don't serve you because they don't think there's any money in it. And that's not what we're about.
Right, right, sure.
So, you know, we, we want to bring this, it's not just about making money, it's about bringing a service to their citizens.
Right.
Like I said, I'm very passionate about this because like I said, I would not be where I am today if, if my family didn't invest in having internet for our house back in, you know, the two thousands when internet was still a new thing. So it's a very, it's a thing I'm very passionate about to want to see. I think it gives a lot of opportunity to kids and adults alike. The level's the playing field.
And for the newbies that are here, we also provide internet service to every, I mean, every school in the, in the community. So we've got that system, lots of the industry. So we're, we're aggressively growing and-
Yes, and we have sent a renewal to the school system. We haven't gotten a signed, signed service order back yet, but it looks like they are going to renew for another five years with a reduction. But it looks like that partnership is going to be secured for another five years. We also have partnerships with the county, nine-one, sheriff's office, a lot of our industrial customers, Hoshizaki and MKDA, so Caterpillar even. So we're, I think we've got a good foothold in the community. We just need to expand it and really hone in on marketing.
Any other questions? All right.
This will be on your agenda for March eleventh, I think, is our next meeting. So you'll have a resolution to adopt this rate structure at that time and potentially an RTC contract for marketing as well.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next issue is present a draft water capacity recovery fee structure prepared by Water and Wastewater Rate Consultant, Raftellus, to provide recommendations on necessary updates to the water fee schedule. Director of Water and Wastewater, Brandon Lewis, will address. Welcome, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm sure most of you are aware that we already have a sewer capacity recovery fee in place. It's been in place since ninety-eight, I believe, Drew, most recently updated in two thousand and eighteen. Raftellus is our rate consultant and fee consultant who also developed the current structure for that fee. This fee structure is going to be modeled pretty much exactly after that same structure for the sewer capacity fee with some minor changes that I'll talk about in a moment. But for anyone who doesn't, who's not aware of what a capacity fee is, I provided you a definition. This gets a little confusing. People often confuse tap fees for capacity fees and don't understand the difference until we explain. So I want to make sure, I want to assume everyone knows the difference. A capacity fee allows us to recover, it's a one-time fee first of all, and it allows us to recover funds that go back into providing for capital cost that we incurred upfront to provide the service to someone and also capital cost that we need to invest into our infrastructure for renewal purposes. Our current sewer capacity recovery fee is three thousand five hundred dollars and that's based on an equivalent residential unit. So what that means is a, just a regular standard house, a three-bedroom, two-bath house, uses approximately three hundred and, three hundred gallons per day of sewer demand. This fee structure is based on that as our lowest, our lowest common denominator for establishing the fee and assessing it. So if you were to build a house in Griffin, you're going to incur a tap fee. That's for us to provide labor and materials to install the tap. You'll incur a capacity fee, which is, goes back to recovering funds that we've invested in the infrastructure to provide the service and then other customer service fees, customer service advantages. We need this well because we have a right to recover it. The city takes out bonds and loans to put this infrastructure in, provide the service. It is a public good, it's a necessity, but we need to make sure we're bringing in money to renew our infrastructure as needed. So this is a bit small, so what I've done is just put in some call boxes here to bring your attention to kind of the main points of this, this fee structure. The first one, you'll see an acronym RCNLD. That's replacement cost now, less depreciation. There are three different approaches we looked at with our rate consultant for establishing this fee. One is based on original cost of our infrastructure, namely our treatment plants and the distribution system. The other approach was replacement cost. There's, if you can imagine a plant that was built in nineteen twenty-nine such as Harry Simmons, the cost of building it then versus the cost to build that same plant today is astronomically different. So we would be looking at a very, very low fee that doesn't make sense versus a very, very high fee that maybe isn't equitable. So we went to replacement cost now, less depreciation. So that's exactly, it means exactly what it says. It's that higher replacement cost if we were to rebuild that plant now and then we deduct the depreciated value of the, that infrastructure. The two sections, water system assets and then adjustments, adjustments is where the depreciation comes in and principal credits on loans that we've taken out. Right now, we're, we've arrived at about a hundred and eighteen million dollars is what we should try to recover through implementing this fee. I can tell you that, I don't know that we will ever recover that kind of money. We're, we're looking at implementing this fee late in the game, but we need to get it in place now for new developments that come along to be able to pay their fair share. The next section you'll see is, I mentioned with the sewer capacity recovery fee, the equivalent residential unit, for some reason, we swapped the acronym around a little bit on this one and we're calling it a residential equivalent unit. Same thing though, that is based on three hundred gallons per day of use per household. So sort of an average number is about three hundred gallons per day for a standard house of water demand. That is multiplied by the system unit cost in dollars per gallon per day, which is six dollars and one cent. And that's how we arrive at the residential unit fee of about eighteen hundred dollars. And what I intend to do is round this off to the nearest hundred when we implement. The next section down, I'm going to press, is this the laser button here, the little red one?
I hope so.
Okay, I hope so. There we go. All right, the box down here at the bottom. So when we talk about everyone paying their fair share, this is where this comes into play. Most residences are going to have a five-eighths to three-quarter inch meter connection. Some may have a one-inch meter connection. And then we have meters that go up in size from there, potentially a one and a quarter, one and a half inch meter, though we don't stock those and put those in, but there may be some out there. Two-inch, three-inch, four-inch, six-inch, eight-inch. There's a capacity ratio that goes along with each one of those. And you'll see the ratio for the nominal size and the, the size that makes up the majority of our system is a ratio of one. So that's multiplied by the residential equivalent unit of eighteen hundred dollars. A one-inch meter can flow about two and a half times the capacity of a five-eighths or three-quarter inch meter. That maybe doesn't make sense in your, in your head, but that's the way the hydraulics work. So therefore, the fee on that one jumps up to about forty-five hundred dollars. And then if we go down to two-inch, which is the next size that we stock and provide to customers, the capacity ratio jumps up to eight times. You're going to see that on restaurants primarily, two-inch or larger, some of them may have a one-inch. But that's going to equal a fee of about fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. If we get a big water user come to town and they need an eight-inch meter, this is where we've topped out the scale here. Meter sizes go up far beyond eight-inch, but this is where we've sort of topped out the scale. And I'll explain that in just a moment. You'll notice their fee, the capacity ratio is a hundred and forty times that of a regular residential and the fee goes up to just over a quarter million dollars. So the point of this structure is that everyone pays their fair share. If you're going to use a lot of capacity in our treatment plant, then your, your fee needs to go up proportionately. Then there's customers that maybe they're going to have an eight-inch meter, but maybe that, that eight-inch meter is going to be flowing at a very high rate. And maybe the demand is not intermittent, maybe it's more of a continuous demand. In those cases, the fee that's based on meter size alone do not, doesn't really cover it. So that's where we'll look at, what is your million gallons per day estimated demand on our system? And if it's one million gallons per day, then this fee will also apply, which is a charge per MGD and that is six million dollars, six million twelve thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars as calculated right now. You are aware, we're, we're working on a deal with a, an industrial user over in Butts County right now. That's the fee that we'll, we'll assess to that connection. And they're looking at a capacity demand of two-point-five MGD. Their meter connection will not be directly with our system because they're in our wholesalers system. So there's not going to be a meter base fee that associated with this schedule that applies, but the MGD fee will, will stand. So two and a half times six million and, you know, we've got about fourteen million dollars, fifteen million dollars coming in.
Okay. The development of it, Thomas and Mill. And I know, how will that be determined? Is it according to the, a number of units or?
Yes. So the way, I'll explain the way I handle that right now with sewer and give you a kind of a picture because it's not, it's not always black and white. You, I mentioned earlier, the equivalent residential unit is based on like a three-bed, two-bath house that's occupied by two-point-six people, according to the state. So obviously, a one-bedroom flat's not going to have that same demand. So we scale it and allow for like a one-bedroom flat to be assessed half the rate of the ERU instead of the full rate of the ERU. Or in our resolution for the sewer capacity fee, which the wording on this one will mirror, if an engineer provides a detailed demand projection for the development, then we can use that number as long as we agree with their projection. In other words, they need to back it up with math and data. If it doesn't match up, then we have a engineering manual that we go to and we use to assess what their fee should be based on other factors. Let's say it's a restaurant. There's not, I don't know how many three-bed, two-bath homes that's equal to. So what we do is we go to the Metcalf Eddy Engineering Manual and we look at full-service restaurants, seating capacity fifty people, and it gives us a, a formula to apply to that type of a development. And, and that gives us a sewer demand for that type of development that we'll then use to calculate our fee. We'll take the same approach with this. I'll have to call out specifically what the reference manual would be for this fee or more than likely be the same Metcalf Eddy manual for simplicity's sake. Or it's going to be further simplified by just going with the base meter size schedule there. So we, I don't anticipate that we're going to have, this, this is only going to apply to new developments. So anyone that's already been given a capacity allocation, I can't go back and apply it to them.
But they've already been given a capacity allocation.
Yeah, so, so this will apply to anything new after we approve a resolution to implement.
And then on infill development where there was an existing water and sewer tap at one time? Our current position, my understanding is they don't, they're not required to pay a sewer capacity recovery fee if there was an existing?
If there was a building.
Building on that structure that they would have paid in the past?
That's right. So if there's a-
How do you, could you just give a quick, crystal clear understanding of how we address infill development, existing structure gone?
I'll give you a couple of scenarios that, that I've come across to paint that picture. One, like what you're saying, if it's an infill development, if the structure was previously torn down, say by us, we don't know that a new structure's going to go there. So I don't hold capacity for a structure that's been torn down and we don't know if someone's going to put a new one there, when they're going to put it there. Because that capacity is, goes back into the pool, so to speak, and is available to anyone else that wants it. However, if someone buys a house or property that has a, a house on it that they're going to tear down and then rebuild a new house and that house was previously being served by water and sewer, then no, the capacity fee wouldn't apply. So capacity goes with the structures that are being served, not, not necessarily the existence of a tap. Developer may come in and put, let's say in a residential development, they may install taps and service lines to the right way for lots that currently have no structures and they don't put a structure on it. If they do that, then someone who buys that property and constructs a, a house or business, they, they wouldn't have to pay a tap fee, but they're going to have to pay a capacity fee.
Thank you.
So another instance is where, let's say a business in maybe the, kind of the closer to downtown where an older structure that was once a home is converted into a commercial property. What I look at there is, okay, it was, it's been, being served by water and sewer, however, their commercial use is now present, now contributing a demand that was far greater than the residential use. So I deduct, I calculate what the commercial demand is and then deduct the previous capacity allocation based on residential use. So let's say their commercial capacity fee for sewer right now is ten thousand dollars. Well, if it was previously a house being served by sewer, then I'll take the thirty-five hundred dollars off of that and it's a sixty-five hundred dollar fee. Same approach would apply with this.
Thank you.
Also, it's worth noting, our friends across the street at the Water Authority, they voted in January to implement a capacity fee. Their capacity fee structure's a little bit different, but they use our same rate consult. So there is a lot of similarity. They don't have treatment plants and they have a lot less system capacity than we have. Their system capacity is three-point-two-five million gallons per day. Our system capacity based on treatment capacity is twenty-four million gallons per day. So that drives a pretty big difference in the fee for the residential equivalent unit. Theirs is right now going to be two thousand three hundred dollars. As I understand, they are still working out how they're going to apply on the commercial side and industrial side. But I have a feeling that if we implement it first, they'll do what we do. That's, it just makes sense for the community. So.
So can we build into our rate model for Spalding County since they're selling our water, since they're selling our water and they're getting a sewer? and they're getting a sewer, a water capacity recovery fee?
They would get a, so there would be a capacity fee for someone who connects in Spalding County. If it's inside our service area, we have, we get the capacity fee.
We would charge eighteen hundred dollars.
Yep. If it's in their service area, they would get the fee.
And they get twenty-three hundred dollars.
Twenty-three hundred. And the, the key, the main difference there again is the available capacity. So what that means is that they have less capacity. So as it's allocated, they need to build more infrastructure to provide more capacity. We have a lot more capacity both in treatment plants and in the air in our elevated storage.
But we, we pass on the cost of capital improvements through our water rate on an annual basis. We're actually recovering costs.
Well, since, since our rate is, it increases based on MCI, we're not truly. We, we are, we are getting capacity back in our rates. And that is what the audited financials, our rate consultant looks at. So if we take on a lot of debt to do something on the water side, it ends up, it can end up factoring into the rate. However, that hasn't been updated in a little while. So we've just been going up by MCI, which covers cost of service. It, the incremental increases in variable costs for us to do the service. So while capacity hits our wholesale model, it doesn't hit our retail model like that until we do a cost of service analysis and, and full scale update. This, this will minimize or decrease some impact to, if we were to do a full cost of service analysis for drinking water to our residential customers, our retail customers, excuse me. This fee structure in place helps mitigate some impact to that rate.
So Spalding County is benefiting off of our water, thirty-two hundred dollars, thirty-three, twenty-three hundred dollars for household, and we bear all the risk and all the burden of producing.
They'll, well, their fee's not based on our capacity, it's based on their capacity alone and the cost of their delivery of the water to their customers.
All we can do is just, whatever it is, we charge them, charge them. And hopefully we have our, it's calculated by good and that.
Yeah.
We can't, we don't have no control over what, what they charge.
Yeah, I, I.
But if they wanted to tie, but on our sewer end, if they wanna tie into our sewer system, they pay the thirty-five hundred dollars for single pound res, per residential unit.
Correct.
Back into our.
Yeah. But the key difference to remember is, you know, we have sewer service area that extends out into the county.
Correct.
Water service area is a little bit different. There's a couple of patches that are outside of our municipal jurisdiction, but still our service area. But primarily, it's within, you know, city limits. So that's the key. That's, that's what will determine what fee gets applied. It's whose customer are you based on our service areas per SDS. So what we, what we charge Spalding County per thousand gallons of water covers anything that, that's in the wholesale model. So that covers any capacity impacts and it's updated annually by Raftellus in their wholesale rate. So as their system grows and impacts our capacity, that's, that does factor into the wholesale rate.
So right now, if someone wants to build, once this is approved, to have clear understanding, currently on a five eighths water line, the sewer, the tap fee on that is?
Two thousand forty dollars, I believe.
Two thousand forty dollars. And then that's for the water line and for the sewer tap is?
Twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-three hundred. And then the sewer capacity recovery fee is thirty-five hundred and we go to an eighteen hundred dollar.
Yeah.
Water capacity recovery fee.
So a, a brand new home being built where, on a piece of land where there wasn't previously a structure that had capacity already allocated, the cost of to get water and sewer services to that property is, would go up by, from what it currently is to eighteen hundred dollars more. And that is still a good deal. If you're looking at putting in a, a well, you know, what are you at, fifteen thousand these days, I think, on putting in a well?
Sewer, drain field.
Yeah. And then septic, which we don't allow if they're, if they can get to public sewer. We require that they do that, they're within two hundred feet, so.
We haven't increased our fees in quite some time, have we?
We have increased our tap fees. That's been about twelve months ago now. We have not increased our sewer capacity fee since two thousand eighteen. That was the last update on it. So it, it certainly needs to be looked at. It, it could, it would more than likely go up because we've had some, it will go up, I'll say. We've had quite a few sewer projects been completed and that, that services hit the books since then, so.
What do we charge for a meter?
For a meter?
Yeah, for a meter.
Uh, well, the tap fee includes the meters, two thousand and forty dollars for a three quarter inch. But if you, if there's a tap there and we just need to provide a meter, I think it's five hundred and seventy-five dollars right now.
The same for irrigation, irrigation meters, same?
Yeah, it's, it's just based on the size of the meter.
The, just a quick question, the backflow meter inspection, is that a state department?
It is. The backflow preventer, yeah. Our cross, we're required to prevent cross connections to our system. And that can look like a connection to reuse water. It can look like connections to chemicals. Let's say you had a business and they've got some kind of automatic cleaning system that has a pump and, and a chemical reservoir on it that can accidentally, if it can overcome our system pressure theoretically, it could push the chemical back into our water system. Backflow prevention stops that from happening. So we have, our approach is it's required to have a testable backflow preventer for every commercial connection. And we have a non-testable backflow preventer for every residential connection, which is included in that tap fee that we assess. It's, we provide that, that component in our meter set, which is box, meter, backflow, which is called a dual check, I think.
Any other questions? Concerns?
This'll also be on your next March agenda for approval.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to clarify too, I, I've got a couple more questions I wanna go back to our rate consultant about that I've thought about since I've put this together and it could change. It could impact the, what you see here just a little bit, but it wouldn't change very much. It might impact the fee plus or minus a hundred dollars, something like that. Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, rolling into item three, discuss the need for an additional fire station in the southwest portion of the city and tear down, rebuild a fire station number three. Chief John Hamilton will address. Welcome, chief.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome. Let me see, I'm gonna try to be brief. I was thinking about the five Bs as this, I know it's, I'm the last one, which I hate, but it's okay. We'll get on with this.
Be brief rather be brief.
Yes. Was thinking about that this morning when I was prepared. I'm gonna have something to pass out, I'm gonna do it then. But first off, let's start with a little bit of history of sort of where we're at right now. Starting back in, I went back from nineteen ninety-one and you will see our progression. And I have each year that I'll hand you, like I said at the end. But this gives you a pretty good idea of sort of where we're at. We've had sixty personnel, suppression personnel, twenty per shift for many, many years. But in the parentheses, you'll see that is actually administrative staff. In nineteen ninety-seven, we went up to six with the addition of a training officer and a, and a secretary at the time. Those went away over the years and we've just finally gotten that back as of last year. So we're sort of back at the same staffing we got, we were at, at nineteen ninety-seven. You can see our call volume has greatly increased and the number of stations has not changed a bit. I've been asked before, how do y'all make that happen? And we've done the best we could with what we had, but I have no more. We're, we're pretty much tapped out. I don't think I can pull any more rabbit's eye of a hat. And on the end, those are just simply the apparatus we have. We started with five engines, one ladder and two reserves. We are down now to three engines, one ladder, one mini pumper and one reserve. We streamlined to make the best of our budget, to make things happen and to get as many people on the trucks into the scene as we could. So we've had to make some adapt, adaptations over the years to make things happen. So fire station number four, this has been a need. We've seen it for a few years, it's been on our radar, but we weren't really sure what we were gonna have to do with it. So this is the easiest I could put, put it. Last station was built, fire station number three, was built in the middle seventies. It's approximately fifty years old and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. Call volume since then has five times as much. It was about six hundred calls when that station was built and now we're over three thousand. This year, I don't know where we're gonna be, we'll see. Yesterday alone, we ran seventeen calls. We went all day long and it was extremely busy. No personnel have also been added since the middle eighties, any suppression personnel. We've still done, it's been sixty since the eighties, that's what we have now. So we're asking these men and women to do a lot with the same amount of people we've done since the eighties, which is, like I said, we've done really well. The southwest portion is the most vulnerable right now. We've added a, a lot of things in that area. We have five sets of apartments, two of them are over three stories, or three stories, which is a lot to cover that. Fire station number one for the county is on Carver Road, but that is also their busiest engine in the county and it is all over the place. It is rarely in quarters. We ran a call at Dollar General, you may have seen it on social media last Friday, with a car on fire about ten feet from the structure in the handicap parking space. And it took us six and a half minutes to get there. Just to put that in perspective, fire doubles every minute. It was absolutely rolling when they got there. They did an outstanding job, county station one was there to help, but it was, it was a lot. And six and a half minutes in my business is not good. I am a four minute being on scene kind of person. When I started, it was three. We're allowing, I'm allowing that minute because traffic, but we need to be on scene in about four minutes. So adding that station's gonna be about five million dollars. Got with the person that built fire station number two and said, hey, what would it cost us modern? He said four point one plus, and that's with no furniture, no generator, no property. So about five million dollars, give or take. And that could flex a little bit, especially with the price of things and where we're at right now. A potential design, you'll notice that that looks a lot like fire station number two. It's not. It's actually Henry County Station Six. You'll notice that they are copycats, but that's okay. We, that's, to us is flattery. All of their new stations look like fire station number two and we would like to keep that same design just because it works really well for us. And it's efficient and looks good for the community, which is important to us because we want them to be proud of it and feel like it's a safe place for them to come to. This sort of a map showing our current facilities and one of them, don't let it fool you, the one here in the bottom, that's the training grounds. So, but you'll notice fire station number two, station one, station three, this area is wide open. Like I said, a lot of building going on there, the new apartments that are actually off of Williamson Road, that one is four point one miles from station two and station three. Four point one miles with traffic and a very large fire truck trying to navigate that, it's gonna take some time to get there. So that's the biggest reason we need a facility in this area. Along with that, just because of where we're at time wise, is fire station number three is fifty years old. A fire station's lifespan is fifty years old. It is time. It is very inefficient. Electrical plumbing, other things are in need of some upgrades. The concrete and asphalt around it is crumbling. We're trying to make do right now the best we can. Don't want to throw a lot of money at it. If things happen and we can't go this way, then we will throw a lot of money at it and, and try to get it to where we can at least take care of our people and take care of our, our apparatus. The building, of course, is older. It does not meet NFPA codes or, or many others. And like I said, the lifespan's about fifty years. And you're talking another fifty million, fifty-five million dollars due to constru, demolition and construction and then furniture, all the same things. And goes for the other one, is we'd like for it to look very similar if we could.
Would you build that at a different location or how?
Potentially. That's, that is sort of up to discussion. The location for station four is up for some, a little discussion. I got an area that I would like for it to be a corridor. But station three, if we decided to move it a little bit, get it out of that medical overlay right there, we are all about that, but we've got to strategically place it so that if we move three, I need to move four a little bit over. So I just need, and these need to be done simultaneously so that we don't make a mistake and put them too close or too far away. We're trying to maximize our effectiveness to the community. So yes, absolutely up for discussion. That's sort of the symbol of that. There's fire station number three. You'll notice it looks very nice. We take care of everything we have. We take very good care. All of our stations look good. We do the best we can. We painted that building, whoo, probably ten years ago, I believe, and did some upgrades. But it is, it's got a lot of issues, very narrow doors. When ladder three goes out the doors, luckily their, our drivers are really good, but they cringe. You got about four inches on each side, that's it. You turn the wheel just a little bit, you're taking a mirror off or you could take the pillar out of the center. And they also have to back that back in because of the way the station's built. We cannot, it's not a drive-through station, which is what we prefer. When you back up, accidents happen. Going along with these, just because it's, has to sort of happen with it, is the potential of apparatus. Station four would need a new engine, new pumper for that one is about one point two million. And I actually updated these this morning because I have four personnel that should be getting back to the station in about an hour. They just left Ohio for a final inspection on engine one. And they were feeding me information this morning from, actually from the dealer that says, hey, this is what it currently is. So one point two million, that's the same as engine two and engine one. The current engine one that's, will be here hopefully end of March. And a replacement for ladder three, which is at station three, that unit is set to go in reserve in two years. And we have it set for, at fifteen years, they go into reserve because they've been run hard for fifteen years. And they do five years in reserve to be able to give us as a backup just in case. And then they're gone. Anything past twenty years costs us way too much money and they're, they, the safety level goes down. There's just a lot of issues. To replace that one, it's currently one point eight million dollars. I paid.
One point three.
About a third of that at the time when I bought, actually ladder three, I think it was six hundred and forty thousand dollars when I bought it back in two thousand twelve. So it's almost three times as much. The truck, the, the pumper, one point two million for a new one, the one that's coming is right at seven hundred million. I think it's seven forty-two and that was, tells you the difference in time. It's gone up almost a half a million dollars. A heavy rescue also needs to replace squad three. It actually has to come out of service in two years. It is reaching its end. We're, it's been in reserve and it's, it's sort of doing dual right now. We're trying to get it there, but a million and a half. That was an updated number this morning as well. And these prices change twice a year right now. They, usually it's around the first of the year, January, February, and then they'll change again sometime right after mid-year. And that's due to parts and all the other stuff that goes along with it. So we're struggling with that. I will tell you, every one of these units right here, if I ordered them today, I cannot, I will not see them for three years. And that's if I ordered them today. There's not getting any better. We had some phone calls the other day. Fire trucks are anywhere from three to five years out. Yeah, we're struggling. We're struggling with that. And I sent an email out for us as a leadership team to try to figure that out and how to manage that over the next, because there's trucks that I need in two years and I can't have them for three. So we're, we're gonna have to work through that, but we'll sort of see how that goes. Just so you can see, engine one, this is actually engine two, engine one that comes, you're gonna say, man, it looks just like it. They're, they're twins. They look just alike other than the one on the door. This is the aerial that we're looking, they're replacing ladder three and then of course the, the rescue for that one, just to give you a visual of what we're talking about. just to give you a visual of what we're talking about. And I put this on there just for purposes, but the symbol of that slide is timeframe of building. You know, it takes six months to a year, depending on the time of the year, to build a fire station. If we, the building goes into the latter part of the year, it's gonna be delayed. There's, it gets way too cold to do some things, and it gets way too wet, so we're just not gonna be able to. So it's all about timing, but then bidding it out, getting the contractors, getting all of that, it's gonna take time. And what ideally is, station four, when it's complete, move the personnel from three to four so that we don't have to house them somewhere else, tear down station three, rebuild station three, and then we will have to add, of course, the next slide, which is the, the ex, the part that I cannot do without, because they are the backbone, is adding to the team. We're gonna need about twelve people to man station four, that leaves four people per shift, and that allows for one person to be gone, whether it's on vacation, holiday, training, you know, sick time, something like that. So we have three personnel on that engine, and right now, I think I figured it up in the budgets. Total cost for a new firefighter is about seventy thousand dollars as a recruit, and that's all the compensation added, roughly that. And that's not including, in the next five years, ten to fifteen people will be retiring, myself included. So that's gonna be another issue, and what we would like to do is hire a few at a time so that we don't have everybody with the exact same level of experience. We want people, move them up out of the green stage and let them start growing before we add a new set in there. It's very difficult to add twelve people at one time and expect them all to perform like we need them to. It takes about two years to be a good, well-rounded firefighter.
If we institute a ten-year freeze on retirement, can that just?
You can do that right after I leave. Well, that was, the scary thing is, chief meets in the back of the room, he, myself, my other two battalion chiefs, chief Brock, Gates, all of us, the only one that'll actually be left is Ms. Aaron, and she's awesome, she told her, you run the place anyway, so she will continue. Bron Michael, the lieutenant over training, and Mike Thompson will actually be leaving the year after that. He's got, he's just leaving right after, and this is a plan, this is if we all stay to twenty thirty, because a lot of us, that's sort of our plan, and plans change, but, and it's just a lot, and I have a lot of firefighters that'll be retiring. I have two captains that can retire this year. It's getting, it, it's getting real, a lot of us came at the same time, and we're hired near that, so we're all getting at the same time where it's, but we also haven't had a lot of retirements in the past five, seven years. But it's, it's coming quick.
So before I throw out my questions and comments, does the board members have any thoughts, or?
Well, we'll be supplying the fire department for the new airport, correct?
I don't know the answer to that, that's up to y'all. That's my plan, but that is up to y'all. And that will also depend on a lot of growth in that area as well. If what I think is gonna happen, the growth in the northeast part of the city may necessitate a station, especially in that area, we'll see.
So Carver Road Fire Station basically sits approximately about where we're, we need to have a station.
Yes.
And so we've got a potential redundant service, but the county doesn't have any, I, you know, any comprehensive if they need to move out further and let us put a station in that area.
We've discussed it.
I know, but, so we've got to figure out where all that's going.
Yes.
With the new airport being annexed into the city, we really need to move that, once the Crescent Road Station a little bit further, more to the east, so you're actually gonna be able to two stations at the same time, and then.
Yes, I, I, ideally.
So you could go with two stations. We're waiting for the SPOLOST meeting with the county, which we could bundle all of these stations and expense into our SPOLOST in terms of our project, so we really need to know what that number is for two stations, equipment, you know, trucks and everything.
I can have you that this afternoon.
Right, so we need to have that number, so we can say, hey, we're gonna be doing this amount, you know, five thousand per, you know, ten million for the two stations, five million for equipment, and have that ready to go. If the county doesn't call for the SPOLOST, and if, or if the SPOLOST fails, we as a board, I think, need to be committed to say, hey, we need to bond this, you know, the, the engine, you know, the.
Yes.
Could be, we could bond the fire stations at twenty years, the equipment at ten years, I mean, we could, we could figure out, but we as a board, I think, need to make that commitment.
I, I would agree, because.
To say, hey, we're, we're, we're going to.
We want to provide the same level of service.
We need to make sure, so roll from there, so that's my thought in terms of us getting the, the right buildings, the right places, and, and make sure that we're thinking outside the box for the next forty to fifty years. And go from there, so that, that's, I think, the direction that we as a board need to go is, we need to be prepared for the SPOLOST negoti-, law, SPOLOST negotiation with the county with a number. And then, as our plan B is, if they don't pull the trigger or if it fails, we're, we're prepared to bond the, the project.
Mayor, a couple of comments on that first, Dr. LaBetta has approached me, asking me about creating a joint fire station at Carver Road, city and county, together, so that is something that we can discuss. Chief Hamilton, I think, has already thought about that to some extent, so we would just sort of need to weigh the pros and cons there. I also have forwarded you all an email this morning about some dates for a SPOLOST meeting, we can't seem to get together. I just sort of piggybacked off what the county clerk sent the county commissioner, so if you'll just answer that, it's sort of talking to Spalding County, but same difference.
Correct.
What dates, you can do that. And then if you are going to, if a SPOLOST fails, or we do not put all of that on a referendum, it would still be a geo-bond, which means it has to be by referendum. So your other option is to probably do a brick and mortar loan with GMA or something along those lines, because you're still asking for a bond referendum. So, but there are certainly some options.
We need to move.
Yes, we don't have a choice.
We don't have a choice, we gotta go and get this done, and if it works out, you know, maybe we tell the county that we give them whatever amount of money for them to go build a new station. They really need a station out near Rover's and Teller Road, Williamson Road, because they've got an, an outside the six, the five mile limit there.
There are some recent talks about them moving, and I have not had a chance to talk to Chief Byrd, but I will, I'm gonna plan on doing that this week to see what their thoughts are. What I'm hearing would actually make that station available if it is true.
So we just need to work as a partnership.
Yes.
To better all the community.
How was that building? How old was that building?
The one on Carver Road, it was built in nineteen seventy-six, nineteen seventy-eight, I think seventy-eight is when they actually went into service.
It's about a, this fifty-year capacity.
Oh, it is, and it has some issues similar to fire station number three, where there's some concerns, especially for me. If, it would be my preference if we went out there, is that station would be demolished and rebuilt. That's not, it would not fit us for a modern day.
But is that the best spot in terms of serving that area, or is there a spot that you think that's, I mean, that's where we need your.
I think the question.
Recommendations, where do we need to have?
Well, and, and mayor, and chief, before you answer that, if we're gonna talk about property acquisition, let's do that in executive session, so we don't increase the price way past.
Thank you, that's why y'all hear it.
Yep, thank you.
But it would be like Ms. Murray said, if we're moving three, that's what the decision is.
Yep.
Where we want to do and how we want to do this, so that we space them appropriately, and also at the same time, not put it in the middle of a residential area if we can help it. Nobody wants a fire station right beside their house. You do? Okay, all right, we're gonna put it on precedent then.
I want to be able to run out and save my life when, when my wife gets mad at me.
I'm, we're, we're definitely up to the discussion, we've looked at it, I've been looking at it for years, I've got a lot of plans and thoughts, but I, you know, I sort of need some guidance.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Connor, on that?
No.
Real quick, I'm just gonna hand these to you, this just tells you from nineteen ninety to present, it gives you call volume.
Thank you.
All of that information, this is where I pulled all that information from, just to give you some thoughts.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, John, for your being brief, you're the shortest of all.
I try.
Good job. All right, item four is considered executive session pursuant to OCGA section fifty fourteen two one for the purpose of consulting and meeting with legal counsel pertaining pending and potential litigation settlements, claim, administrative procedures, and other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employer, or in which the agency or any officer or employer may be directly involved in pursuit to OCGA section fifty fourteen three V one B for the purpose of authorizing negotiations to purchase, dispose of, or lease property. Do we have motion to go into executive session? Mrs. Murray with a motion, second by Mrs. Ward. All in favor, please stand and join us.
You're my hero. My hero, Forrest.
Recording in progress.
I need, I need four warm bodies. One, two, three, you need one more warm body. All right, do we have motion during the meeting? Mrs. Murray with a motion, second by Mr. Wright, all in favor, raise hand.
Aye, aye.
Unanimous, we're going home.